Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Worcester School Committee. If you can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of America, to the United Nations, one nation, one nation, and to God. Individually, freely, and justice over all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? One so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming. Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Here.
Member Biancheria?
Here.
Member Beninda?
Here.
Member Guardiola? Vice Chair Johnson?
Here.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough? Member Roy?
Here.
Mayor Petty?
Here. We're going to go to M. Student Advisory Committee items. From a required form that students must fill out every weekend regarding their lunch plans for the following week, which will give cafeteria staff a closer estimate on how many students plan to grab lunch, grab school lunch and ought to prevent schools from running out of school lunches, as some have in the last few weeks due to the quality, to the quality improvement. Mary Jane Bata.
Hi, good evening.
Introduce yourself to what school you're from.
Oh, yeah, of course. Hi, my name is Mary Jane Bata. I'm a senior at Worcester Tech. And we, the Student Advisory Board decided to send in this item as we noticed that this year, the lunch quality has definitely improved with the new menu. And a lot of students have really loved it, but with that, it's become a problem where the lunch is later on in the day. So like at Worcester Tech, we have a 12, 12, 20 lunch. And by that time, lunch runs out in like 10 minutes. So the problem is, is that a lot of students are finding ways to like take double of lunch without paying, or it's just become a problem. And I do also think a part of that is not enough staff in the lunchroom, like just like teachers keeping eye on things. But also, I think a lot of students who like have home lunch are also going to grab school lunch, which is totally like do that because school lunch is for everybody. But it comes a problem where students who don't even bring a lunch, don't get lunch. So we were saying that if there were to be a Google form that was sent out weekly where students could respond, and obviously it wouldn't be a definitive answer, but they could say like, do you expect to take school lunch this week? If so, how many times? Because I know a lot of students plan out their lunches for the week. And we could use this for like the lunch staff as like an estimate. So we can prevent running out of school lunches because it does end up becoming a problem. And obviously lunch is such an important part of the day for students to keep going. So we just thought this forum could be a good like addition. And there would definitely have to, like, we'd have to figure out the logistics of it, but it could give everyone a good estimate and just better outcomes.
Okay. Well said. So we'll send that to the administration. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. We have the consent decree. We'll do a roll call. Do you have a question? Member Beninda?
I just have a question. Is three notification of personnel records under the consent agenda or is that separate?
I believe it's under the consent agenda, right? New hires. Yep.
Because I'd like to take that separately if we could. I have a question on that one.
Okay. So which ones that? The instructional positions or?
Notification of personnel records.
All three?
Just the resignations, retire, and non-remunerals.
Okay. So we'll take everyone except that. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Beninda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola? Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough? Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Member Beninda?
So my concern on that was that I noticed that again, there was a speech and language, a speech and language therapist that has resigned. And I looked back and I came up with nine that have resigned this year. So my, my concern is, how are we covering? Because that's, that's a really important service for students. So how are we covering the service when we have now nine speech and language therapists that have resigned?
Dr. Q.
Through the chair, we are following that very closely and we have actually put a lot of plans in place. Things such as what we haven't done before. We have been advertising it. They're all posted. If you go on School Spring, if anyone out there is interested, we are hiring. We are looking at different ways to hire. We have not advertised part-time positions for these, but we are now because we recognize the need. And so we are working very hard to make sure that we're filling these positions, but they continue to be advertised and we continue to actively fill these positions.
Member Beninda?
Through the chair, have we figured out why nine have resigned? That's a lot of speech and language pathologists in one shot school year so far to be signed.
So through the chair, I don't want to get into specifics. We do, as I've shared before, we do have exit interviews. And some folks have shared with us and we've asked them about this, but unfortunately, those are personnel issues that I am reluctant to share here.
Through the chair, I think in September, we had asked for exit interviews and we did not, we were going to get them to us. We haven't received them yet. I'm wondering, could that be included in that information that when you have chance to put them together, you could give them to us?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay. Okay. So motions to approve that. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. Public comment. Any member may address the committee regarding any items for two minutes. And is your name, say your residence and item number?
Thank you. Fred Nathan Worcester. So item GB four dash one oh seven, the issue of the vaping. I don't know about you, but I thought smoking in general, including vaping, was not allowed in any public building. Why are we even talking about it? I'm just curious. I thought all smoking vaping was not allowed in any public building. If there are students who want to vape, fine, tell them to go outside. If it's cold out, oh, well, tough. Somehow, students have always gotten by if they had to go outside and do their business of smoking or vaping. I know it's on the property, but I think we'll let them smoke or vape outside. Honestly, that's the issue, is it? I assume you want to make sure they don't do this inside. So if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. GB four dash one one zero. In all the different budget cuts, or whatever they have been, if you're taking money out of any kind of an alternate or intervention to make sure that drugs don't get involved in schools, then I think you're doing a disservice to the city and the students and the parents that you cut money out of any kind of intervention that keeps drugs out of school. Am I missing something here?
No, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Before we go to the report, the superintendent, oh, we have a public petition. Is Mr. Rushton here? No, we'll put that on hold. Hang on. Do you have a public petition or?
I have a comment.
Oh, this is the time to speak now. Yep. You have two minutes. Yep.
Hello.
Is your name, say your residence?
My name's Rachel Prior. I live in Worcester and my daughter goes to City View. And I'm a parent leader for City View. And I wanted to say thank you to all the advancements that's been made towards like especially City View and everything else. It's been a big help, especially with the traffic. And also, parents also had concerns regarding bullying on the buses and for us to consider like, I know it's a budget issue, but the calculation of students to teachers.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay. So we have a petitioner is not here, so we'll hold out till he shows up. But we have a young lady in the audience. Ms. Clancy would like to speak. On the sort of low mind, we'll go to Kathy Roy's item. Request administration to consider proposal prepared by students at Sullivan Middle School Civic Action Projects class to provide after-school bus transportation for students who wish to participate in after-school tutoring and activities who have no other means of transportation. Ms. Roy, do you want, do you want to speak afterward before or do you want to speak at all?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to talk first or you want to set it up?
Through the chair, I'll talk after.
Okay. Go ahead. Introduce yourself, Madison and?
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak with you today. My name is Madison Clancy and I'm an eighth grader student at Sullivan Middle School. We recently have had a member of the school committee, Ms. Roy, and City Council, Ms. Corleiro, to come speak at an assembly at our school. The assembly was given to our eighth grade class because we are all doing civics action projects this year. And I asked a question to Ms. Roy about how to get a late bus. And she challenged me to work with my teacher and present this to the school committee. So I'm here today, today to talk about something that affects a lot of students, and that's transportation for after-school activities. Specifically, I want to ask you to consider providing a late bus for students who want to stay after school for academic help and extracurricular activities. As students, we are encouraged to participate in sports clubs, touring sessions, and other after-school programs. These activities help us grow in many ways. They allow us to develop skills like teamwork, leadership, and time management. They also help us build relationships with other students and teachers, and they're a great way for us to explore our interests outside of the regular classroom. But here's the problem. Many students want to join these programs, but not everyone can. After school, there's only one bus that leaves right at the end of the school day. If we want to stay for an activity, we have to find a ride home. Unfortunately, not all families have the flexibility to pick up their kids later. Parents might be working, have younger siblings to take care of, or may not have access to a car. This means some students are missing out on valuable opportunities simply because they don't have a way to get home. If the student provide, if the school provided a late bus, it would be open, it would open up these programs to many more students. A late bus would allow all students to participate equally in after-school activities regardless of their family's schedules or transportation options. Here are just a few benefits a late bus would provide. Fair academic support. Many of us would love to stay after school to get extra help from our teachers, but we can't if we don't have a ride. A late bus would make this possible. Increased participation in after-school activities. Students who currently can stay for clubs, sports, and tutoring would finally have the option to do so. More engagement in school. When we're involved in activities that we enjoy, we're more likely to feel connected to our school. This sense of connection has shown, been shown to improve attendance, behavior, and even grades. Now, I understand that adding a late bus would cause more, cost more money, but we would only need it three days a week on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We all, when all of the clubs and sports practices are scheduled. All, all of our teachers also stay after school for extra help one of these days too, which will allow students who are struggling to get the help they need. And this way, the cost is more manageable. According to the Transportation Office, the cost of the late bus is $67 per hour, per day. We are asking for the late bus to start on December 3rd and run through May 29th. Looking at the routes from past years, the late bus would pick up students at Sullivan Middle School at 4:30 PM and would make 16 stops and reach the last stop at 5:30 PM. That would be 65 days and an hour each day. So the total cost would be $4,355. To finish, I want to thank you for considering this request. Adding a late bus would make a huge difference in the lives of many students at our school. It would help us participate fully in our school committee, support our learning, and make after-school programs available to have, to everybody and not just a select few. Thank you for listening to my presentation, and I hope that you'll consider the positive impact that a late bus could have on our school committee. Thank you, Madison Clancy.
Thank you. Nice job. Member Roy?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the teachers for having me at the school and speaking to 400 eighth graders, which I did not have butterflies at all, which I was surprised. But anyway, I want to say thank you to the students. You did a wonderful job on putting all your facts together, getting your information together. And I want you to know that I truly appreciate the fact that you are becoming involved because tomorrow you will be the leaders of Worcester. So I'd like to thank you, and I would like to refer this to FOG for further discussion.
Sure.
Thank you.
Those in favor, opposed or ordered. Thank you. And nice job, all of you. So good job. We didn't introduce your colleagues. You introduced your fellow students. No?
She wanted to be in the background.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to our petition. Request the school committee work with the superintendent in developing a plan to integrate the fastest-growing sport in America, pickleball, into our school programming. Pickleball is a lifetime sport that can be played by boys and girls of all athletic abilities. Many surrounding communities already have incorporated pickleball into their school systems. Not children deserve the same. As part of the plan, I would request establish a minimum of two pickleball courts that were next to the four middle schools. Additionally, I request that the committee in the school district prepare for eventually that the MIAA will be establishing it as a high school sport, which is being talked about in the next two years. The recommendations refer to FOG. Mr. Rushton, is your name, say your residence, counselor?
Frederick Rushton, City of Worcester. First of all, I want to say you guys did an awesome job.
Thank you.
And great to be out here advocating. I'm almost in the same vein as them, and it's about opportunity. My dad taught for 46 years at Forest Grove, and a lot of people said he did a pretty good job and he won a bunch of awards and things like that. But one of the things he said, I said, well, Dad, what do you think the most important thing is as a teacher? He says, it's to build self-confidence. If you can build self-confidence, you can take that rock and skip it across and it produces a ripple effect. And one of the things we found over time, after Prop two and a half, when all the high school sports and all the middle school sports and elementary sports were all cut out in 1984, and they barely trickled back. And we, over the last few years, we've established some more junior high sports and opportunities for athletes and non-athletes to be able to participate, to build that self-confidence. And one of the issues we find is that women, in particular, in junior high school, that's when they start dropping off sports. And we know the value of teamwork, of having a common goal together, and then developing, you know, mentally and physically. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America, in the world, actually. And I'd just gotten into this a couple of months ago. And what I have found is all the surrounding communities host all the courts. So when I go out to Northboro or to Westboro, I'm asked where I'm from and why am I here? And I say to myself, I'm a city of 200,000 people, and we have zero dedicated courts. You go to any major city, I've played in Providence, I've played in New York City, I've played in Boston, I've played in all sorts, all sorts of places. Baltimore, just a couple of weeks ago, where they have dedicated courts. My idea here is to develop participation for athletes and non-traditional non-athletes, because it's a sport that it takes, it's very little buy-in, it doesn't cost a ton of money, and it's a fun thing to play. And if we put it on the campuses, the various campuses are right next door, like up at East Middle, right where Garrick is, you could slide in two courts there very easily. It will get used, and those children will help develop some more self-confidence. I know this is not an overnight decision. Started out similar to food trucks, a lot of people like, not going to happen. Took a couple terms, but what I would suggest is that we start attacking this. From an equity standpoint, because if it's good enough for all these other towns and these kids are in elementary school being taught it, why not Worcester? We're a city of 200, we're a great city, and we deserve it. And so I'd ask that we, we continue that. The last thing I want to add is I am lucky enough to have a gentleman who I went to college with, who is a high-level executive in the number one paddle company in the, in the country, hosts, has the best players in the world, said that he would, because he's done this down in Montgomery County, down in Maryland, he would provide all the paddles, will provide all the nets, will provide all the, if they have teams, all the T-shirts. He will bring up the best pros in the world, and he will have them do instruction to get the kids involved. This is a growing sport, and I think if we take a chance to step back, these courts cost about $30,000 to put down. So it's not a ton of money through capital budget. We all know it can work. It's not a ton of money, but it can produce a great benefit. But again, I want to say, like them, talking about opportunity, I think it's piggybacked on that tonight. So I want to thank them and thank the committee for indulging me.
Thank you.
And I just came from playing pickleball. Unfortunately, I had to play Route 12, West Wilson, because, you know, don't have any dedicated courts around here. And anybody that wants to play pickleball, I'd happy to show them how to play.
Okay, nice hat, too.
Thank you.
We do have one pickleball court. It's over in Holmes Field. I'm not asking for a response. No, I'm good. It's not dedicated.
You know me well enough.
Nice hat, too. Okay. We are going to send that to FOG. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. Everybody else in the audience, we'll go off to the superintendent, Dr. Morse. Mr. Allen. Dr. Morse and her team are going to come up and give the point of the superintendent on literacy tonight. Perfect. We have Colleen Murray and Amanda Taylor. That's fine. It's okay.
Good evening. Through the chair, we're excited to be here tonight to share with you some insights around Amplify's Core Knowledge Language Arts program. So could we go to the next slide, please? So as always, this evening, we'll bring it back to the strategic plan, and we will be discussing equitable resources and educational programs from our strategic plan tonight. Case, the next slide. We will always bring the superintendent's goals to you at each presentation. So this evening, we are focusing on this goal in the purple, and the goal we are focusing on pertains to relevant research in theory that impacts instruction. And we will always be focusing on intentionally providing insight into historically undeserved populations. And what we hope you learn more about tonight is the, the objectives listed. And we will share with you some of the factors considered in the high-quality instructional material selection. We want you to learn a little bit more about the science of reading or CKLA, and learn a few differences between what science of reading and balanced literacy is, which might be referred to as Fountas and Pennell, and then get a little deeper into what Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts provides for our students. And before I turn it over to our team, which I probably should have introduced before I got started, to my right, we have Amanda Taylor. She is our literacy expert. She's our district curriculum specialist. And to her right is Colleen Murray. She's a district literacy coach. And in front of me is just Amanda. She's the director of our multilingual learners. So I'm going to start with a little bit of background, just to orient you to where we were. So it's the next slide, Case. Keep going. So Worcester, like the rest of the nation, has been focused on literacy achievement for a while. And even before the pandemic, we were not where we hoped we could be. And upon learning a lot more about than now, we refer to it as settled science on the reading wars, we worked to position our district for future success by addressing deficits in materials and instruction. And much like others, when hearing the Soul to Story podcast and other new research and literacy recommendations from prominent scholars, we took the time to process, reflect, rectify, and redirect our approaches based on literacy and research. Next slide, Case. What we, what we came across were like three basic facts. First is national literacy data trends indicate that achievement has stalled, like Worcester. And historically, marginally students, outcomes were significantly worse. And we also, like the research, indicate that and understand that there is an urgency to develop proficient readers by the end of third grade. So those are three basic facts that we, we paid attention to when we were determining our next steps around HQIM. Next slide. So to orient you to our challenge, we had multiple challenges, but let's take a look at Worcester's challenges, for example. Our data did resemble and reflect national and statewide trends. We were performing in the same way that other districts like us in larger and across the, across the country were. At this time, HQIM access was not readily available to our educators and students, but really anywhere, because the new curriculum that has come out has been, has been improved dramatically over, over the years. Gaps were evident before the pandemic and post-pandemic, and we, we know all the research on that. And the primary curriculum that we used here and nationally, now this is one of the most commonly used curriculum in the country at this time, failed to meet expectations, and it was rated as did not meet expectations by Ed Reports. And for all of you, Ed Reports is a group, and it's endorsed by DUCY, and it rates different curricula and helps educators identify and be able to use and select high-quality instructional materials that are aligned to state standards. So that's the background. We wanted you to have that so we could help you know where we were and where we are today. So I'm going to hand it over to Amanda Taylor, and she's going to take it from here.
All right. Thank you, Marie. A robust body of research highlights the powerful impact of high-quality instructional materials on student outcomes. When teachers lack access to high-quality materials, they often resort to finding resources online, which leads to inconsistencies and therefore inequities in instructional quality. This issue is especially pronounced in districts like Worcester. Studies indicate that students of color and students from low-income backgrounds are less likely to have access to standards aligned, high-quality materials compared to their peers. Providing teachers with high-quality curriculum with a clear sequence of instruction has been shown to improve classroom practice and elevate the instruction students receive. In fact, in classrooms where students had consistent access to great appropriate assignments, one study found that students made nearly two months additional learning gains. In the 2022-2023 school year, Worcester initiated the process of selecting of selecting a high-quality elementary ELA curriculum. As we researched new programs, we simultaneously worked to grow educators' understanding of the research behind our upcoming shift. Prior to adopting a new curriculum, educators and instructional coaches participated in various professional learning opportunities aimed at deepening their understanding of this research base. This included a 42-hour course on key skill reading for all coaches and teacher leaders from each school, along with book studies and workshops. Concurrently, we embarked on a robust year-long curriculum selection process, aiming to choose a program that aligned with the science of reading and met the specific needs of our schools. We began this process by inviting all elementary staff to participate in the review of nine programs that met expectations according to Ed Reports. Based on surveys collected during this preliminary review, four top-rated programs were selected for further consideration. Each school sent one to two representatives to attend a day of presentations from each curriculum provider. Ultimately, two programs were chosen for a two-month pilot in six elementary schools. Surveys and interviews with teachers and administrators, along with classroom observations of each curriculum in action, led us to adopt Amplify CKLA in grades K to five and Amplify ELA in grade six for district-wide implementation in the following school year. In the 2023, 2023, oh, excuse me. While no curriculum is perfect, Amplify emerged the best choice for our schools for several reasons. First, it received high ratings from our pilot teachers and was designated Green Rated by both Ed Reports, which was previously discussed, and CURATE, which is Curriculum Ratings by Teachers, a curriculum review panel specific to Massachusetts. The materials are aligned to both Massachusetts State Curriculum Frameworks and research-based best practices, such as explicit and systematic foundational skills instruction, which includes phonics. In addition, students encounter rich and rigorous grade-level text every day in units that are designed to build knowledge in a wide range of topics, fostering both critical thinking and problem solving. Daily learning tasks provide opportunities for students to think strategically and extend thinking, while embedded strategies meet the needs of a wide range of learners. Amplify also offers tools to collect ongoing data on student progress, enabling teachers to plan individualized supports effectively. Lastly, there is a strong research base supporting Amplify with evidence of improved literacy outcomes in districts that are similar to Worcester. My colleague, Colleen Murray, will now share an introduction to some of the research and frameworks behind this approach. Having reviewed the rationale for selecting Amplify as our curriculum, let us now examine the research foundations. Let's take a closer look, oh, next slide, sorry. Let's take a closer look at the definitions behind the research and major literacy frameworks. Understanding these concepts will clarify different approaches to reading instruction and reveal how each shapes the way we teach literacy skills. The science of reading is an extensive interdisciplinary body of research developed over five decades and based on thousands of global studies. It provides strong evidence about how proficient reading and writing develops and identifies the most effective instructional methods. This body of research draws insights from cognitive psychology, neuroscience, linguists, and education, forming a comprehensive understanding of how people learn to read. Structured literacy is an explicit, systematic, and sequential approach to reading instruction. It focuses on essential components such as phonology, sound-symbol associations, syllable structure, morphology, syntax, and semantics, designed to support all students, particularly those with reading difficulties. Structured literacy teaches the structure of language in a clear, combative manner, building towards skilled, building towards skilled reading comprehension and fluency. Balanced literacy is an instructional framework that combines various reading and writing approaches, integrating elements of both whole language and phonics. It emphasizes shared, guided, and independent reading along with writing activities. While it aims to foster a love of reading and accommodate diverse learning needs, its flexible nature and lack of standardized implementation can lead to inconsistent outcomes, especially for students with learning challenges. As we explore these definitions, it's important to understand how the science of reading forms the foundation of our approach to literacy education. This research isn't just a single method. It's a rich body of knowledge that shows us how reading skills develop over time. It tells us what works best in teaching kids to read. What's compelling about the science of reading is that it directly supports structured literacy. This framework takes those research findings and puts them into practice in the classroom, making sure all students get the support they need to learn to read. And that's where the Amplify curriculum comes in. It's designed with these principles in mind, using research-based strategies to help every student become a confident and skilled reader. Now we're going to compare two approaches to literacy instruction, balanced literacy and structured literacy. While both aim to develop strong, confident readers, they take very different paths to reach this goal. As we look at these two methods side by side, we'll see how structured literacy aligns closely with the latest research on effective reading instruction, while balanced literacy reflects a more flexible, student-driven approach. Understanding these differences is key to recognizing why many educators and researchers now advocate for a shift towards structured literacy. In a balanced literacy program, the K to three literacy block consists of separate blocks of read-aloud, guided reading, shared reading, independent reading, and word-work activities. Phonics lessons are chosen based on observed needs and likely differ in sequence from classroom to classroom. Meaning and visual and semantic cues are used by giving readers, by beginning readers to solve words. Comprehension skills are modeled and practiced using a variety of disconnected text. A significant portion of the K to three literacy block is spent in small group, with some students engaged in guided reading of leveled text with the teacher, while other students work independently. Conversely, the literacy block in a structured literacy setting integrates all aspects of literacy. It provides an explicit, systematic scope and sequence of instruction and foundational skills, including phonics to every child. Complex text is at the center of instruction, with comprehension skills taught in the context of connected text sets. More time is spent in whole-group instruction. Small groups are flexible, need-based, and used to target foundational skills or guide comprehension of complex text. Now that we've explored the difference between balanced literacy and structured literacy, it's essential to understand a foundational concept in reading instruction, the simple view of reading. This model illustrates that reading comprehension is the product of two key components, word recognition and language comprehension. By breaking down these elements, we can gain a clearer understanding of how they work together to develop proficient readers. The simple view of reading specifically identifies word recognition and language comprehension as the two essential components of reading comprehension. Word recognition involves the ability to recognize words by translating letters into sounds, while language comprehension encompasses understanding spoken language, which includes vocabulary, grammar, and the ability to infer meaning from text. For effective reading comprehension, both components must be developed. If either area is weak, the overall comprehension may decline. This framework emphasizes the necessity of targeted instruction in both word recognition and language comprehension to cultivate proficient readers. Amplify closely aligns with this model by systematically integrating instruction in both areas throughout its curriculum, ensuring that students develop the skills they need to become successful readers. Building on our understanding of the simple view of reading, now let's now take a look at Scarborough's Reading Rope, which offers a more detailed model illustrating the essential components of proficient reading. This model consists of two main strands, word recognition and language comprehension. Word recognition includes key skills such as phonological awareness, decoding, and sight recognition. These skills enable readers to identify and articulate words effectively. On the other hand, language comprehension encompasses background knowledge vocab. I have the wrong one, sorry. Sorry, I have the wrong one. Where are we? No. Sorry. Building on our understanding of the simple view of reading, now let's take a look at Scarborough's Reading Rope, sorry about that, which offers a more detailed model illustrating the essential components of proficient reading. This model consists of two main strands, word recognition and language comprehension. I think it's still wrong. Word recognition includes key skills such as phonological awareness, decoding, and sight recognition. These skills enable readers to identify and articulate words effectively. On the other hand, language comprehension encompasses background knowledge vocab, understanding language structure, and verbal reasoning. Together, these elements help readers make sense of what they read. As these strands intertwine in Scarborough's model, they emphasize that the effective reading requires both the ability to recognize words and the capacity to comprehend the meaning and context. The framework highlights the critical importance of teaching both aspects to ensure learning development develop the necessary skills for successful reading. Now back to Amanda. And next slide. So informed by the science of reading, the Amplify programs use research-based practices to develop confident, proficient readers prepared for future academic challenges. These programs foster a love of reading by connecting literacy instruction with rich content, ensuring students not only learn to read, but also understand and engage with what they read. As students progress through grade levels, literacy block adapts to meet their growing needs. In the next section, we'll explore what a literacy block looks like across different grade levels. Amplify's Core Knowledge Language Arts Program for K to two provides a strong foundation literacy through a structured, knowledge-rich approach. CKA lessons are divided into two strands, skills and knowledge, aligning with the simple view of reading in the Reading Rope models discussed earlier. In the skills strand, students receive systematic and explicit instruction in foundational reading skills like phonological awareness, phonics, and word recognition. This strand builds essential skills for reading fluency and comprehension. In a typical kindergarten skills lesson, students review previously taught sounds, learn a new sound, practice it orally in words, and practice letter formation, before moving on to interactive activities like chaining in the reading of decodable text. The knowledge strand focuses on building students' knowledge through reading of complex narrative and informational texts. Since beginning readers can typically comprehend text well above their independent reading level, teachers read aloud from texts two to three grade levels higher, followed by class discussion. This exposure builds vocabulary, content knowledge, and comprehension skills. By analyzing these texts orally in pairs and small groups, students strengthen their speaking and listening skills. After the read-aloud, students apply their learning and writing activities that reinforce their understanding. This image captures the CKA skills block in action in a second-grade classroom, where students are applying their phonics skills through the partner reading of a decodable text. In grades three to five, the skills and knowledge blocks from the primary grades evolve into an integrated literacy block. Knowledge-rich units focus deeply on a single topic over several weeks, seamlessly moving among different literacy activities that engage students in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Students analyze increasingly complex narrative and informational text through meaningful discussions, collaborative activities, close reading exercises, and writing tasks. The curriculum also includes explicit instruction in advanced grammar, spelling patterns, and vocabulary to support students' growing comprehension and language skills. And here's a visual of our third-grade students engaged in a CKLA lesson. In sixth grade, students transition to Amplify ELA. This curriculum taps into students' natural tendencies towards collaboration, exploration, and independence, using engaging texts, collaborative activities, and student-led inquiry as core elements of the literacy block. Through Amplify ELA, students explore units that build knowledge of both the world and the word, learning through a balance of rich informational literary text. Reading comprehension instruction emphasizes close reading, which involves deeply analyzing high-quality text to understand what the text says, how it conveys meaning, and why it matters, a critical skill for college and career readiness. Additionally, students build effective communication skills through student-led discussions and project presentations. Lessons are tailored to meet students at their current level while maintaining grade-level rigor through differentiation scaffolding. The program's digital tools and resources enhance engagement and support diverse learning needs, ensuring that literacy instruction is interactive, relevant, and future-focused. And this photo depicts a picture of our sixth-grade students recording key ideas from their reading on a poster while they are working in Amplify ELA's Mysteries and Investigations Unit. This slide illustrates the Amplify CKA unit topics that students will encounter throughout the year, organized by grade level. As you can see, students have the opportunity to build both knowledge and vocabulary across a diverse array of nonfiction topics, while gaining exposure to both contemporary and classic literature. Importantly, students develop knowledge over time through interconnected strands that will progress year after year. For example, our preschool students learn to identify parts of the body in the All About Me unit, which lays the groundwork for their kindergarten learning in the Five Senses. This foundational knowledge continues to expand in grades one to three, where units include the human body, the human body building blocks of nutrition, and the human body systems and senses. Numerous studies have demonstrated that knowledge building is crucial for developing strong reading comprehension skills. Readers who possess relevant background knowledge about a topic are better equipped to understand and integrate new information encountered in text. And here we have our kindergarten students actively engaged in acting out a nursery rhyme to reinforce the meaning of challenging vocabulary within it. Amplify's programs include targeted supports for multilingual learners, or MLs, a program feature which was highly valued during our adoption process. Key components that benefit MLs include language-rich instruction that fosters interactive discussions, helping students... Additionally, vocabulary instruction is systematic, introducing and practicing new words and contexts to build understanding. Visual support, geographic organizers, and illustrations further aid comprehension and clarify connections between concepts. Teachers are also equipped with a range of supports and strategies to scaffold instruction for MLs. These strategies are embedded within the lessons and the teacher guide and designed to break down complex texts and tasks, therefore increasing accessibility. The program also promotes differentiated instruction through flexible groupings, ensuring targeted support for students at varying English proficiency levels. Amplify CKA's Language Studio, utilized by our ESL teachers, offers high-quality, programmed-aligned ESL resources which preview or reinforce language and content from core lessons, helping MLs access grade-level content while developing academic English and effective expression. Additionally, lessons and units feature culturally-relevant content that resonates with students of diverse backgrounds, enhancing engagement and relatability. CKA introduces students to a broad range of knowledge-rich texts and topics that explore themes shaping civilizations and cultures worldwide. Together, these elements create an inclusive learning environment where our multilingual learners can thrive. And from here, I'll pass it to my colleague, Jess Manda, to tell us a little more about CKLA and ESL instruction.
To further support our ESL students during ESL instruction, we created ESL CKLA alignment maps, and these maps were created with all elementary ESL teachers. It was a collaborative effort, and it was done with WITA 2020 language goals that are targeted with each CKLA unit. The target language goals, the maps contain targeted language goals for multilingual supports by week. The CKLA resources that align with these language goals, assessments that capture student progress towards identified language goals, and the units were developed in alignment with our WITA standards and grade-level standards. Next slide. To further provide supports during Tier One instruction, we are engaging currently in a professional development that is focused at the elementary level on CKLA and how to provide scaffolds for multilingual learners. During this professional development, we focus on vocabulary development and reading comprehension skills, primarily focused on before, during, and after reading strategies using techniques as Cornell note-taking and graphic organizers. And these are strategies that will help Tier One instruction scaffold for our multilingual learners. Our next steps for this PD, which is currently taking place at the secondary level, is attendees will practice these scaffolding techniques demonstrated to them for their school and ML leadership teams, and then plan to model for teachers in their building as well. But this was a heavy focus on ELD standards to ELA to content standards.
Thank you, Jess. So to end this section, I'll share that in considering the adoption of Amplify programs, we carefully reviewed the experiences of districts with demographics similar to Worcester that had already implemented Amplify. This included examining recent research and consulting with district leaders from several of these districts, all of whom reported significant improvements in student literacy. These districts included Denver Public Schools in Colorado, the Harris County Department of Education in Texas, Cleveland Metropolitan School District in Ohio, Baltimore City Public Schools in Maryland, and Los Angeles Unified School District in California, among others. Although providing high-quality instructional materials is an essential first step in ensuring all students receive the best possible instruction, we know that teacher knowledge is also paramount to the success of any implementation. In this last section, we'll outline the professional learning In this last section, we'll outline the professional learning opportunities and supports that are available to our educators through curriculum adoption and the implementation process. Our adoption of the Amplify program was supported by a comprehensive series of professional learning opportunities. Full day Amplify launch sessions for all educators and administrators commenced in May of 2023. Following this, educators, administrators, instructional coaches participated in several additional trainings led by Amplify experts throughout the school year. These trainings covered essential topics such as enhancing planning for classroom teachers and enhancing observation for our school leaders. Elementary coaches began attending monthly literacy meetings starting last school year to support their program implementation and deepen their understanding of the science of reading. This year, we introduced bi-monthly literacy meetings for elementary literacy leadership teams, which consist of each school's principal, instructional coach, and a teacher leader. These meetings allow us to engage with and build capacity among a broader range of stakeholders, continuing to support a strong and unified implementation. Continuing to expand our learning, representatives from our teaching staff, coaching staff, and school leadership are participating in statewide Amplify Community Practice Network meetings and Amplify's Innovator Network to foster continued professional learning and program innovation. This work is a collective effort not limited to the Teaching and Learning Department alone. We continue to collaborate very closely with the Multilingual Education Department and the Office of Equity, Cultivation, and Recruitment to ensure that ELA instruction is both culturally responsive and meets the needs of all our diverse learners. Along with the district-wide supports outlined in the previous slide, Teaching and Learning staff have provided continuous, often personalized, support to schools throughout the first year of the program implementation and beyond. These have included learning walks, support school leadership teams in identifying what to look for in terms of strong program implementation and research-aligned best practices, lesson and unit planning support for teacher teams, and supporting schools with protocols for data analysis and standards-focused planning. In our first year of implementation, teacher teams also developed district pacing guides to facilitate teacher planning. Pacing guides have since evolved into detailed curriculum maps that outline various components, including assessed standards, summaries of formative and summative assessments, and scaffold supports and extensions for each unit. This comprehensive approach ensures that teachers have the necessary tools to effectively reach all learners. As the kindergarten teacher quoted here as noted, "Learning to implement a new curriculum program with confidence takes time." We are committed to supporting educators as they deepen their understanding of the science of reading and continue to implement effective instructional strategies to help our students succeed, using the Amplify materials as a valuable tool. And as the second-grade teacher emphasizes, "We continue to strengthen our instruction practices year over year." We look forward to all our teachers and students will accomplish by the end of year two of our implementation. The Multi-Tiered System of Supports, or MTSS, represents a continuum of high-quality instruction intervention within the general education setting, as introduced in a prior meeting. Research shows that eighty percent of students can succeed with strong Tier One instruction. This approach is not one-size-fits-all, but is instead a deliberate, systematic approach to grade-level instruction that provides students with the scaffolds and supports necessary to access and engage with their grade-level content. To date, our professional learning has focused on equipping teachers with the tools needed to make grade-level standards accessible to all our students. Recently, we have expanded this focus to also include high-quality Tier Two literacy instruction, ensuring that we are also addressing gaps in foundational literacy skills. This approach aligns with the district's commitment to providing equitable learning opportunities for every student.
So we couldn't possibly come up with this slideshow to show you all of the great things that are happening in our district. So instead of more slides, we decided we would show you.
Perfect.
Through the chair, so there's the end of our presentation this evening.
Okay. Great job. Very impressed. And how long has the curriculum been there for? That we're using for these programs?
Through the chair, this is our second year.
You see a positive result with the younger kids, the younger students. The second grade is, third grade is kindergarten.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It is an eye-opening event to see the rigorous application of learning in every classroom. So we feel that CKLA has been a great benefit to the district.
I know some of the slides that said Vern Hill, the principal, said that they were reading at grade level. Do we track that now, or is that too early to get a good idea?
Through the chair, we just got some of our BOI, which is Beginning-A-Year Benchmark Data, in, and we are trending up. So we are beginning the beginning of the year this year for every grade at a higher level than we were last year. So we're excited about that.
Congratulations. Member Penanda?
Thank you for your report. I did some little research, too, that I'd like to share. Considering that the whole thing about reading WAS really has been a long, persistent history. For over a hundred years, we've been talking about how do we teach reading? And what materials do we use? And actually, in the late eighties and in the nineties, that work was the basis for phonetic awareness and phonics and the way in which we identified the foundational skills as essential. So through the years, we know more about the science of reading than the science of reading instruction. And we use, in Massachusetts, as you listed, we use two sources to identify, you know, one of the best materials. We use HQIM, and we use Edvports and Curay. So ELA programs meeting expectations right now, for example, our Wonders K-5, Wit in Wisdom 3-8, Introduction to Reading K-6, Imagine Learning L K-5, ARC, which we had used for our L students, the American Reading Company Core K-12, also L Education K-5, 6-8, and Amplify CKLA K-5 and 6-8. The interesting thing is that published curriculum programs typically embed a variety of research-based practices. But it's important to know the large published programs themselves are not evidence-based programs. These published core programs do not have evidence of approved outcomes for students using specific curriculum. For this reason, the HQIM rating by Edvports and Curay cannot and do not report out expected outcomes for students based on the use of a specific program. It is not part of the HQIM rating system. So for example, Edvports reported that CKLA Amplify K-2 did beat expectations. And this is the quote, "meets the criteria for alignment to standards and research-based practices for foundational skills instruction. However, the materials include limited opportunities for explicit systematic instruction and fluency using grade-level text in the form of decodable readers." It goes on to say that "combining well-established findings from cognitive science with classroom-based feedback from hundreds of teachers, Amplify CKLA ensures that children will learn to listen, speak, read, and write well." In other words, research-based elements are embedded, but the program itself is not evidence-based. And we were talking about Fontenelle-Pennell. So Fontenelle-Pennell drew on the foundations of their level literacy also, related to Tier One. They had strong evidence in What Works Clarin House and their extensive publications on successful literacy. Again, we used it. Can't continue to use it right now. Fontes and Pennell had research-based elements embedded, but again, the program was not evidence-based. So really, in summary, I guess the reading WAS continue. They don't provide us the answer that we're looking for. We have evidence over time that it's just never a program. It is really how teachers teach and what teachers do. So I'm really, I'm requesting that we owe our teachers effective, efficient training to further develop their knowledge of evidence-based instruction and develop a sheer knowledge base among professionals. We all know that third grade is the launch. In other words, the work doesn't end at third grade. Third grade is the launch to reading to continue on. So I think urgency matters now. Students start progressing through the grades, and I really think we need to invest more in support for our staff and opportunity for students to accelerate. Thank you.
All set? Any better response? I mean, any more comments? Member Johnson, back to all by member Bean Carrier.
Thank you to the chair. Thank you to the administration for this report. I was just hoping that I kind of got a little more information on kind of... I actually probably wish there was more teachers here to kind of just talk about the past year and the training they've gone through and kind of how things are going. Just due to last year, when I was in schools or whatever, I know some of the training wasn't there when we rolled this out. Could we, you know, we... What's the word I'm looking for? We piloted or whatever, then we picked it. I think we voted on it late in the year, kind of at some point, and then we implemented it starting last year. And I had talked to the superintendent about this and talking to some English teachers who taught ELA in elementary schools last year. They were kind of struggling with kind of grasping it and how does it apply in their classroom because they were used to teaching a certain way and things like that. But I will say, as the year went on, things started to sound better, where they were starting to understand it more, I guess, through some professional training and different things that were going on. Throughout the district, they were starting to figure it out. I was really hoping to hear a little bit more on where we are, where the teachers are with this curriculum, and how they are really seeing it in the classroom. I saw all that. I still, I just wanted to hear more. And I know one of the biggest thing that we had talked about when this first was rolled out was the cultural responsive materials and how are we going to add that into the curriculum? How can our educators get that into their curriculum for our students or whatever? And I was hoping to hear a little bit more about that on what we're doing as a district to align that and put that into the curriculum and how we progress over the past year in regards to that. Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what I really wanted to hear. I think hopefully the outcomes of this curriculum, because when we had looked at it, when you guys did the research on it and the different ones that you looked at, this kind of met us and met the district the best to move on with. I think the outcomes hopefully will come in the next couple of years that we'll start to see that progress within our district with our students. But I guess I'm going to make a motion to get a follow-up, I guess, towards the end of the year and kind of hear more from our ELA teachers, English teachers, who are doing the work with the students on where we're at with this curriculum, what are they seeing in the classroom? You know, the progress. Also, maybe some of the things that are maybe not working well that we need to take a look at. I would just like to hear a little bit more from that, from the teachers in the district. So that would be my motion moving forward. But again, thanks for the report. Thanks.
Don't we do a survey to a certain time of the year? I can't remember now.
Through the chair, yeah. I could respond to a couple of things from member Johnson. So one of the first things we did was address the culturally responsive aspect of it. And we had teacher teams audit, and audit might not be the right word to use, but reviewed all of the units and removed a few that we just felt weren't the best fit for our students. And we don't want to have people checking materials for our teachers. We want to help them understand what bias in curriculum looks like. So we currently have a really interesting report of the superintendent coming up from our Equity Office and some of the culturally responsive work that we're doing. So you'll hear more about this curriculum auditing tool, and we're working on it now. So it's how educators will be able to use this lens in order to ensure that the materials that they're using for instruction are the most appropriate. So those are the most important things we started out with, as you mentioned, when we got it. Other thing I wanted to mention is that there is no perfect anything that you can buy to provide the outcomes that we want to get. We tried to find the just-right fit for our district. And we listened to a variety of teachers who piloted it, tried it. There was a lot of passion about deciding, was it the best? Was it the right one? Way back when we were making this decision, we took this decision very seriously. So the third and last thing I'm going to say, the first time you do anything, it's hard. And every time, every month, every week that we move on and move forward, we're finding a lot more ease with the new program. So I'm kind of happy you're waiting to the end of our second year because it gives, people do need to learn new things, how to use the materials in a new way. So but we are confident that we're a lot less questions, right? In a lot less confusion around how to use materials. It's an array of materials, a plethora of resources, and it takes some time to just figure out what fits for your students. We are not prescribed to just turn the page, read script. We are continuing to make sure that students are getting what they need from their educators. We don't think you can buy something that can address the literacy challenges that we're facing. But this is, in our estimation, at this point in time, the best fit and the best decision for our district. So we'll hear more from teachers, and I'm looking forward to hearing what they say.
Thank you. Member Bean Carrier?
Thank you. Certainly agree with the motion that was made. On one of the pages here, it reads, "High-quality instructional materials matter." Do you feel as though at this particular time we have the materials that are necessary to continue, not only with this, but looking at what improvements we need to make within a certain timeframe with our students? Through the chair.
Dr. Moss?
Through the chair, if I understand the question correctly, you are asking if the district has enough or the right materials for instruction?
To continue to be successful and see the success of this program.
So I would say yes. I think the team around me would say yes. We're continuing to understand the complexity of other subjects. So we are really working hard to ensure that we have HQIM for every subject. And we're... at this point looking to ask at some point for some funding for some liter, I'm sorry, for some elementary science curriculum, but we are satisfied with the decision that, and the investment you all made in literacy in Worcester regarding Amplify.
So there was sufficient funding for 24-25?
Through the Chair, absolutely. And we're very grateful for it.
On one of the pages, it talks about Elm Park kindergarten students acting out the Little Miss Muffet rhyme as part of their nursery rhyme in Fable Unit. I look at that as, when we talk about Chapter 74, which is the courses that have hands-on for every student in different areas of their careers. This is the beginning of showing students that hands-on makes the difference. So you're not only listening to what is occurring in your classroom and what books we're covering, but you're also having the opportunity to act out these pieces. So it brings you to the hands-on portion of what we're looking at. Do we have the opportunity to do that with each grade level?
So through the Chair, can I ask Amanda or Colleen to answer that one?
Sure. Yes, so there are many opportunities in all the grade levels from K up to six for the kids interact in hands-on ways. Obviously, it will look different in kindergarten versus sixth grade. If you look back a few slides, there's a sixth-grade example where students are working to create a poster together. So that's putting that information into their own, making it their own in a hands-on way, but it's going to look different. Throughout all of the grade levels, though, there are also opportunities to act out what they're reading in a similar way that kindergartners are doing. So our fifth graders in the spring will be acting out a Shakespeare play, for example, in one of their units. So it continues all the way up.
I would ask through a motion that we receive information pertaining to the hands-on actions that are taking place through this program. Because I feel as though that is part of what we establish, this as a kindergarten grade, and then we move forward. So it is something they would be more than interested in when they are into high school. It also is a way of them learning. So it continues at that pace. So I would ask, my motion would be that we receive that information from K through six on what programs actually occur. So I'm more than interested in hearing about the play. Because I think that's the part that you look for, for interaction and engagement, and that gives them a purpose. The other piece here is scaffolding strategies. I think it's actually on the next page after what the page I just looked at. And scaffolding has been, strategies has been something we, as Worcester Public Schools, has been doing for years. Because I remember when I was employed with Worcester Public Schools and working on the summer programs, that part of what we did for ELA was scaffolding in the strategies. So I'm a little curious on the strategies that are with this program to the strategies that we were doing in the past. Is there a difference, or is it the same type of style?
So through the Chair. So one major difference for us when we think about scaffolding with this program is, in the past, we've used leveled readers. So our students were getting texts at different levels depending on their reading level. So with CKLA, all of our students are grappling with grade-level text in every lesson, and what we're scaffolding is their access to that text. So they are still reading the sixth-grade texts in sixth grade, even if they're reading below grade level, but we're providing them supports, you know, vocabulary instruction. If they're writing, it might be something like a paragraph frame, sentence starters to start them out if they're having a conversation, different pieces to help them access that successfully.
And you feel as though that strategy is something that the teachers are comfortable with when they're scaffolding this particular program?
Through the Chair. You know, I think it takes time, as Marie was just saying, to feel confident with the new program. What is nice about this program is these pieces are embedded and built in. So when teachers open a curriculum guide, right on the sidebar for each part of the lesson, there are suggestions. If you have multilingual learners in your classroom, here are some suggestions for how you might scaffold the lesson to make it more accessible for them. If you have students with some particular special needs, here are some suggestions that you can embed. So I think they're strategies our teachers have always pulled in, but now it's explicitly there for them to pull from, so it is more consistent across all our classrooms.
So it's more consistent as far as what the strategy is going to be? So if they, we have a tremendous amount of ability with our students. So if they're going from one school to another school, they're entering, and the teachers are using the same tools, the same strategy, is what you're saying? Is that correct?
Through the Chair, yes. And I think that's been a huge plus of that consistency. We're hearing it from teachers that students feel so much more welcomed when they step into a classroom after they've moved. And the same workbooks are being used, they're reading the same novel, they are able to have the same strategies used by the teacher. It's much more consistent, so they're losing less learning time. They can kind of jump right in and know what to expect in the classroom.
Thank you. Also, on one of the pages here, you talk about assessments that capture student progress toward the identified language goals. How often are we working towards assessments? So, and the part of the assessment, is this a report we are making over a period of time? Or is this a test we're giving the students? How are we looking at this assessment?
Through the Chair. So there are a variety of different assessments being given. As far as like end-of-unit assessments that are happening, every unit does have an end-of-unit writing piece that the students are working towards as we get into three to six, a little bit in grade two as well, but they're younger. In addition to that, they do have an end-of-unit reading assessment, so that is more sort of how we prepare them for something like MCAS. They're reading a passage, and they're answering standards-based questions. But many of the units also have more interactive pieces too. So things like project presentations when they're working in a small group presenting to their class. So there is really a variety there, as well as the formative assessments that teachers are doing every day to kind of check in on that daily process with their students and make those changes they need to in the next day's lesson to address any gaps that they might be seeing.
And lastly, I'm interested in the fact that we have comments from other areas on the success of the program, but it seems to be centered in one particular area, and it talks, well, I shouldn't say talks. It's written that, excuse me, it's written that it says, "students of low-income backgrounds." So I'm just wondering, are we looking at this as a program that is enabling all of our students to have success and to grow? Are we specific in saying that it is a certain group of students that we're looking to work with?
Dr. Moss?
Through the Chair. The answer to that question is, this is for all. And we were very interested in a program that would meet the needs of all students. So this is not a program that is designed to only meet the needs of one particular subgroup. It's for all students.
So with that comment, then, I would make a motion that we receive some background information that covers all of our students. So we get comments in reference to the success of students that are in advanced stages and in low-income stages. It gives us a variety. So we're ensuring that we're covering all of our programs. So I would make a motion that we receive that information when we get this, so we know through the assessments that we're covering all of our students, not just specific areas.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Kathy Roy. Member Roy?
I have a short question. How are we adapting the program to meet the needs of our ESL students?
Dr. Moss?
Through the Chair. Jess Mandaz did go over that on a couple of the slides. I think it's 27 and 28. So Jess, do you want to maybe go over that again?
So what we did was, we had professional development with all the ESL teachers, and they went through all the CKLA units for every single grade, and they looked at the WIDA standards, and they planned weekly, weekly units for CKLA specifically for designated ELD, which would be for their ESL pullout, and it also serves for push-in as well. What they focus on are language functions and features, and really just the language of CKLA, so they can learn vocabulary and other things that will support CKLA. And at the end of every week, there are assessments that's specific to their level and that also is specific to just how much language they've acquired and their language goals for that unit. Thank you.
Thank you. A member, Bernada?
So my question is, is there model, is there modeling for staff? Like, are there people that will go into the classrooms and actually model for the staff, both for, you know, for teachers having Ls in their classroom, not the ESL teacher? And the Slif kids, for example, in their classrooms? Is there modeling? And then also for regular teachers, is there somebody that will go in and model a lesson for them?
I could speak specific to the ESL component and for the ESL blocks. We do have our MLE coaches that do offer modeling, and the professional development that we're doing right now is specifically training on modeling, on how to scaffold using the scaffolds that I mentioned earlier. But it is training our focused instructional coaches to also be able to go in and model with our MLE coaches as well. So yes, that is something that we're working on deeply right now.
Okay. So all set? So the motion is to approve. Along with the motions, those in favor, opposed, or ordered. Nice job. We have reports of the standing committees. First one reported the Standing Committee, Finance and Operations, on October 21st, 2024. Motion is to approve. Those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Teaching learning is still in success. This response to the Administration's. Motion is to approve. Those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Approve of grants and finance items. Roll call.
Member Alvarez? Yes. Member Bean Carrier?
Yes.
Member Bernada?
Yes.
Member Gordiola?
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough? Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. We are in the general business. A response to the Administration by the list of names and total numbers of bargain units within the list of public schools and the number of existing labor contracts. So there's a report there. We can file that. Those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Before doing so, member Bernada, I mean, member Bean Carrier?
Thank you. Where this member is not present, is this satisfactory for the recommendation? Do we, are we aware, or is this something we could perhaps hold until next week when the school committee member is present?
We can hold it if we want, but the motion to hold.
I'm sorry, sir?
If you want to put the motion to hold, we can hold it.
Sure.
Yeah, Alex, he didn't say anything about holding it, but...
Okay. I don't know. That's why I'm asking that, because sometimes if someone isn't here and it's their item, I didn't know.
He didn't say anything, so you can file it. Okay. He's going to ask for a... Okay, file, those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Do you view the updates of MASC policies and the audit update the school committee policies? Recommendations to go to FOG, so as it reads. Those in favor, oppose, so ordered. To address the issue of vaping within the schools, establish a clear and unified process to vaping prevention and discipline with the support of the Superintendent and the school committee to protect students' health and uphold the integrity of the school environment. Member Johnson?
Thank you. Yeah, this has come up again. There continues to be some concerns out there in our schools, and I just want to make sure that, and it's basically as it reads, but just trying to ensure that across the district that we are uniformed in how we're approaching vaping in schools, and that all the way, that goes to ensuring that our educators, our administrations in the school are supported in regards to if the need be to have some type of progressive discipline in regards to this. This continues to be an ongoing issue that I'm hoping that we could look into if the budget is any good next year. Bringing back up my order that some of my colleagues failed, I mean, the last time, into addressing the vaping machines in the bathroom to kind of curb some of this that's going on. But again, you know, for me, going to school years and years ago, we couldn't go in the bathroom and smoke cigarettes and walk out with no type of accountability or whatever, and I feel that the same thing should be going on here in regards to vaping. It's a phenomenon with our kids. It's going on. There's not much we could do outside of school to curb that, but I think we have an obligation as educators, administrators, school committee members, or whatever, to ensure that we are doing everything we can to stop that and curb that in our schools when they're in the school 6.5 hours out of the day. So again, this continues to be a very important topic that is going on throughout the district. We need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to address this, to stop this behavior. Thank you.
Yes, we'll send that to the Administration. Those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Provide a detailed plan to improve teaching and learning in the 14 schools selected by DESI as any intervention improvement. Member Bernada?
As it reads.
Those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Next is 4-110. Member Roy, to request the Administration to give information on alternative drug intervention programs provided to our students, grades seven to 12, and we will turn it around. Drug program that was reduced due to budget cuts by the Administration. Member Roy?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to hold this item for the future meeting.
Okay, roll call.
Yes. Member Bean Carrier?
Yes.
Member Bernada?
Yes.
Member Gordiola?
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough? Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. They want a future meeting, maybe by next week? Okay. Okay, so that brings us to the end of the meeting. Well, nice meeting and great job filling in.
Nope.
Assistant Superintendent. And...
Did we do the recognition?
Yes.
Already? Oh, we did?
Yep. Okay, so motion is to adjourn. Those in favor, oppose, so ordered.